Good afternoon, we're convening the Committee on Transportation and Culture and Arts here in State Capitol Conference from 2 to 4 on our 3pm agenda. We do have a number of measures up today, so I'd ask everyone to make sure you have your written testimony submitted, and if you're testifying in person, please be concise, and we will try and finish everybody off within two minutes to make sure that there's time to get to all testifiers. So, that being said, up first, we have a couple of governors' messages for confirmation. GM 570 submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Medical Advisory Board, gubernatorial nominee Bertram Providence, MD, for term to expire 6/30/2027. Don't know that we have testimony on 570. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in this measure that's scheduled today? If not, let's move on to GM 571, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Medical Advisory Board, gubernatorial nominee Brent Burrows, D., for term to expire 6/30/2027. Also have no written testimony on 571. Is there anyone here wishing to testify? If not, thank you, let's move on to...
I have a question, Chair.
Yes.
For both GM 570 and 571, these are all new, they're not up for the second term, I assume?
I believe so.
Yeah, okay.
We can double-check to make sure.
Just checking, thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Let's move on to GM 573, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts, gubernatorial nominee Janet Sato, for a term to expire 6/30/2024. Testifying first is the State Foundation Culture and the Arts.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Karen Ewald, Intern Executive Director for the State Foundation, and we stand on our written testimony and very strong support.
Thank you. Up next is Susan Brown, in support. We have one, two, three, four, five, six other individuals in support. Is there anyone here with us in the room wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee, members of the committee, Jonathan Johnson, former employee of the Foundation for 34 years, eight as executive director, like to speak as an individual on the qualifications and commitment of Ms. Jan Sato of Maui. It's important that the Foundation has commissioners that have both demonstrated a commitment to culture and arts and a collaborative attitude. The State Foundation prioritizes Hawaiians' underserved, both geographic and economic, and has made gains over the past few years in the priorities of education and support of native Hawaiians. Relevant board appointments are critical to ensure the organization continues in this strong direction. I first met Jan Sato in 1995, working at Baldwin High School with her on a school project, where she made sure that the students participated in the art advisory committee. And since meeting Jan then, I witnessed her working selflessly to ensure Maui students had opportunities of a well-rounded education. Fundraising even to bring her students to an art day on Oahu, because they couldn't stay the night because they didn't have enough money, but they would fly every year to the Scholastic Show. Often it was their first trip off the island of Maui. Jan understands the value of the arts that they bring to educating the well-rounded student, and I'm confident in this appointment, as Jan's experience and humble attitude and a lifetime commitment to access to culture and arts parallel the Foundation's priorities.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify this afternoon? If not, Sato, would you like to come say a few words?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Not on the proper protocol for just seeing everyone, but I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity, and I'm hopeful that if I get approved through this process, that I would be able to serve in the manner which I always view the State Foundation Culture and Arts with great, great, great respect. And I hold artists and everybody that has a creative vision for making things better for the residents of Hoi'au, and trying to blend innovation, tradition, trying to take the realistic and then abstracting it somehow, but just pretty much trying to make everything better for everybody, and I think that's especially important. I think that's all. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, but good luck. I must say, though, that I hope you were involved too, because the Maui has the Great Art Center there.
We do.
The cultural center?
Yes.
Oh my God, they have programs and everything, concerts, were you part of it too as well?
The grassroots that Pandi started, you know, working...
Pandi Ko'chi. No, Ko'chi.
Yeah, Ko'chi.
Yes, I remember him.
But we just remember how everything started, very sincere, the efforts, pretty explosive.
Good to have you join the Art Center.
Are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you, everybody. Yeah, before we get into the SCRs. Okay. All right, we're gonna take a quick moment for decision-making on just our GMs. So, up first we have GM 570 and 571. GMs 570 and 571, we're gonna defer for decision-making until this end of agenda, this Thursday. Just like to give everybody a chance to weigh in with testimony, so we'll see if anything else comes in on those. And then, moving on to GM 573. This is for Janet Sato, for a term to expire 6/30/2024, to the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. Recommendation is going to be advise and consent. Is there any discussion? If not, Vice Chair, please take the vote.
Thank you. Chair's recommendation on GM 573, and this is the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, is to advise and consent. Chair Lee.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Elafanti.
Aye.
Senator Tiago Kaloli.
Aye.
Senator Awa.
Aye.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. So we're gonna return now to our resolutions, which are up on, still on the 3pm agenda. Up first is SCR 175 and SR 119, encouraging the state to build a partnership with the Kingdom of Netherlands and collaborate on similar shared challenges and goals. Testifying first on 175 is Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism. Thank you. Up next is Hawaii Farm Bureau. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Brian Miamoto, here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We submitted testimony in support of these two resolutions. You probably wondered why the Farm Bureau's here, supporting the Netherlands bill.
Yes, we are curious.
In the resolutions, there is something about agriculture. Actually, Netherlands is the second-largest exporter of agriculture. Now, we're not here suggesting that we export our food, but we're here to hopefully learn from Netherlands, like we've done with New Zealand, like we've done with Japan. Netherlands has an approach that says they want to produce twice as much food using half as many resources. It's a small country, we can learn from them. I think there's value in learning from what other countries, other locations are doing successfully. So, we're in strong support. Again, any partnerships with any state, country, is beneficial to Hawaii. We need to get better at what we do agriculture. We think Netherlands can actually provide a lot of support. They're very innovative in what they do, and we urge the committee to support these resolutions, and if there needs to be a trade mission to the Netherlands, I'm pretty sure we could find somebody from the Hawaii Farm Bureau who'd love to go on behalf of agriculture. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Further on 175 and 119, we have two individuals in support. That's all the testimony we have. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the committee. Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES, in strong support. The resolution is encouraging the state to build a partnership with the Kingdom of the Netherlands and to collaborate, because the Hawaii and Netherlands have similar goals and similar challenges. So, it looks like to combat climate change, the Dutch government wants to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions by 49% by 2030, and a 95% reduction by 2050. These goals are highlighted in the Climate Act on May 28th from 2019, and the Climate Plan, the National Energy and Climate Plan, and the National Climate Agreement contain the policy and measures to achieve these climate goals. It looks like previously, the Netherlands and the Hawaiian Kingdom previously worked together professionally and politically on the Treaty of Friendship, Commerce, and Navigation, and so, a positive working relationship with the Netherlands is something we are in support of, so thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? If not, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next set of measures. Excuse me, next measure, SCR 72, requesting the establishment of a Hawaii-Taiwan Friendship Task Force to explore ways to strengthen, improve, and expand economic, cultural, and educational relations between Hawaii and Taiwan. And testifying in support is the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Honolulu. And that is all the written testimony we have. Is there anyone here wishing to testify? All right, if not, let's move on to the next set of measures. SCR 176 and SR 120, encouraging the state's collaboration with sister states on global environmental leadership. Testifying first is Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism. Thank you. So have testimony from one individual in opposition, Who Planet, in support, and I believe that's all the written testimony we have. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the committee. Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES, in strong support. So, the population of the ethnic Chinese in Hawaii is 200,000, around 200,000, and about 100,000 of them are mixed race of intermarriage, and Dr. Sun Yat-sang, the founding father of the Republic of China, and many other important figures spent some time living or studying within Hawaii. The government of Hawaii is a longtime friend to Hawaiian-Chinese communities, and...
Sorry, just to be clear, are you testifying on...
Taiwan?
The Taiwan one we just moved off of, but would you like, for the record, we can have this be applied to the Taiwan resolution?
Okay, I thought we were...
To SCR 72. We are now on SCR 176 and SR 120. So, once you finish up, then we'll just have that be for Taiwan.
Rewind, rewind, and then...
Yeah, go forward.
The Taiwan resolution. Okay. So, the government of Hawaii is a longtime friend to Hawaiian-Chinese communities, and it promotes multicultural and diversified economic development, and cares about the development of local Chinese communities. The Hawaii State also maintains a close relationship with both the local governments of the Republic of China and the provinces. Besides the sister relations between Hawaii and Taiwan, Honolulu City and Koh Samui City, Hawaii County, and Hualien County, Maui County, and Ping Tuan County, and Kauai County, and Pen Hu County have also signed sister city agreements. The government of Hawaii set up a liaison office in Taipei in 1994, and the HTA has a branch office in Taipei. So, for these reasons, it can be reasonably concluded that we should be supportive of a Taiwan and Hawaii sort of relationship. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else on SCR 176 and SR 120? All right, if not, are there any questions? If not, thank you, let's move on to SCR 178 and SR 122, requesting the governor to establish a 2023 Asia-Pacific Economic Cooperation Hawaii Delegation Team to participate in the 2023 Asia-Pacific Economic Cooperation events. Excuse me, testifying first on 178 is D-Bed. Thank you. Next is Russell Homa.
Good afternoon, senators, and thank you for the opportunity to testify this afternoon. And I did prepare a written testimony, was submitted, and prior to that, on March 30th, I had a letter of proposal submitted to the governor and the lieutenant governor, the Senate President, and the Speaker, so they all understand what the implication of establishing this APEC Hawaii delegation team for our state of Hawaii economy and our ways that we want to preserve our future, and it's a good exercise to me to groom the young people, and they can get involved with the APEC delegation team, so they can learn the process, and maybe in the future, we can bring APEC Conference back to Hawaii, like we did in the 2011 summit when President Barack Obama chaired it. And this year, as you know, it's going back to United States from Thailand, which they hosted last year, 2022, and it's coming back to us in the United States, so it's gonna be... They kind of broke it down to two cities. Seattle's gonna host a Women in Empowerment and Economic Forum focusing on indigenous American native Indians, American native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, so they can showcase Hawaii's native Polynesia, how we live in unity here. And I know that East-West Center, they're planning on participating in the August one with the Women in Empowerment and the Asian Indigenous Hawaiian, because there can bring up the cultural arts of East-West, because that's what the East-West Center stands for, and I think it's a good way of showcasing Hawaii. And we want to be in the forefront, as you know, we are the Asia, we are the gateway of Asia, and with all the ethnicity that we have in Hawaii, and we can be the leaders of Indo-Pacific Asia and show the people what Hawaii really stands for, and I think it's a good way of showcasing this for Hawaii.
Thank you very much. We also have, sorry, late testimony from Hawaii Tourism Authority with comments, and one individual, excuse me, three individuals, both in support and opposition. Okay, that's all the written testimony we have, please come forward.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the committee. Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. And so, the APEC CEO Summit will take place in San Francisco, California, the week of November 12th, and the summit will bring together CEOs and other leaders and other stakeholders, along with political leaders from the Asia-Pacific, for two days of robust dialogue and engagement on global challenges, including climate change, equitable growth, global health, and supply chain resilience that are shaping economic, environmental, and societal trends in the region. The summit program will showcase a lineup of dynamic and diverse speakers who will highlight the innovations and fresh thinking required to drive more inclusive and sustainable growth, and therefore, for these reasons, we are in support of it. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you, everybody. Let's move on to the next set of measures. SCR 114 and SR 107, recognizing August 8th, 2023 as Hawaiian Honey Creeper Celebration Day. Testifying first is DLNR. Thank you, in support. Also have testimony from the Nature Conservancy in support, Iolani School. Oh, excuse me, Laura Lee from Iolani School in support. We have Wendy Quinsshood in support. Luca Nicole Zavas in su... Oh? Oh, yes, please come forward. Are you Wendy?
No.
Oh, Luca. Good afternoon. I hope I didn't butcher your name.
No, not at all. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and everybody on the committee. Aloha, and for having... Sorry, super nervous. Thank you so much for this opportunity and hearing our resolution to celebrate August 8th as Hawaiian Honey Creeper Day. As many of you guys may know, the Hawaiian Honey Creepers are in a dire situation right now due to a slew of things, especially mosquito-spreading avian disease, but it's really hard to champion for them when a lot of our community does not know who a honey creeper is because they're regulated to the high elevation forests. So, we're hoping by celebrating them on August 8th, we'll be able to bring attention to them and just be able to reconnect communities with these wonderful birds that have called Hawaii home since Kauai and Ee'aoa first came out of the sea, so I am in support, and thank you so much for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. Next we have Julia Diggman, who may be with us on Zoom, and Kylie Farv. Sorry, I may have got your last name wrong.
Yes, Kylie LeFevre, it's difficult, so... Aloha, Chair, Lee, Vice Chair, Noy, members of committee. My name is Kylie, and I'm here in deep support of these measures, SR 114 and SR 107. You know, I've been working with students, it was a great opportunity to work with students across the state. We have about 2,000 students that wanted to champion this resolution and, you know, give you their reasons for how much they love their Manu and why they think that it's important to celebrate them. So, you know, I had the opportunity to teach them a little bit about the legislative process and how to advocate, how to speak up for themselves and for the environment, and especially, of course, our Manu. So, what I took out of this opportunity and this project is that there are so many, not only our students, but the teachers involved, their community members, their family, their friends are all in it for the birds. So, it's been really inspiring to hear their passion come through in their testimonies, and I believe many of them have submitted some to you, but not only them, I've been hearing on board meetings as well, very, very powerful testimony from people across the state of how dire this situation is, why we need to save them, and, you know, with all of this kind of doom and gloom, sometimes rhetoric and conversations and work that we're trying to do, I think this is gonna give us a great opportunity to remember the good things and remember and celebrate them for what they actually are, and they are very, very deserving of it, so thank you so much for your consideration and your time for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We also have testimony from a bunch of students from Manoa Elementary School, from Iolani School, Mountain View Elementary School, Hawaii Tech Academy, and probably a few others that aren't identified here, but is there anyone else in the room with us this afternoon wishing to testify in this measure? Please come forward.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and the committee. Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES, providing comments. So, the Hawaiian honey creeper, many of them are nectar-eating, and they evolved in the forests of the Hawaiian Islands, and are found only within the Hawaiian Islands. So, this breed of honey creepers is an endemic species. Endemic is, it means that it only lives in Hawaii, and it can only be found in Hawaii. So, by studying the osteology, behavior, plumage, breeding biology, and genetics, it can be concluded that the Hawaiian honey creeper is closely related to the cardine finches, which include birds such as goat finches, canaries, siskins, crossbills, and they all constitute within the Derpanidae family, and most of the species are called by their native names. Habitat destruction and the introduction of foreign birds and mammals have led to the extinction of about these eight of the original 23 species. Most of the survivors are endangered. Numerous subspecies are also alive. So, it is very critical that we support this resolution, because it is an endemic species. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else today wishing to testify? One's going twice, all right, are there any questions?
DLNR. DLNR. Question is, we understand, has the mosquitoes already been deployed onto Maui?
No, they have not. We have recently completed the environmental compliance for that project.
Not completed yet.
We still have to do some preliminary field trials, we have to calibrate basically how many mosquitoes need to be released in order to effectively suppress mosquito populations. So, hopefully in the next 12 months, we'll be able to have the project up and running at a scale that will successfully suppress mosquitoes to protect honey creepers.
Is there a reason why, particularly on Kauai and Big Island, that we could share in probably the deployment as well onto the island, so is the research or the study, as well as the impact on the outcome, the concentration is only on one island?
Yeah, so East Maui was the first environmental assessment that we started in partnership with the National Park Service on East Maui. We have a separate compliance process going forward on Kauai, on the A'la Kai Plateau, that is probably about six months behind that East Maui project, and then we're also working on a statewide environmental assessment, that's in partnership with Department of Health, and so that will be to use this technology both for conservation purposes, to protect the birds, potentially statewide, and also for human health, and that's why DOH is a collaborator.
The reason I ask is because specifically, one of our birds that is in dire need of survival is the palila, so I was just wondering why there was a delay for that particular species?
Yeah, so palila, as far as we know, are not threatened by avian malaria, because they occur on the slopes of Mauna Kea, which is actually above the elevation at which mosquitoes can persist, because it's so cold, so we believe that either some sort of habitat condition or non-native predators are what's causing the palila.
Oh, okay. We learn something new every year. Thank you. Anyway, good luck, we look forward to the outcomes.
Thank you, thanks for the questions.
So Maui goes on when, F?
We should be starting the kind of the preliminary trials within the next few months, and then we'll be ramping up within the next year.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much.
Further questions? If not, thank you. That shipment of mosquitoes happens to fall out the back of a truck and get loose on Oahu first, like, I think we'd be okay with that. All right.
Okay, then.
Oh, and actually, for the students, you know, I just want to say thank you to everybody who submitted testimony and who came forward. Oh, and actually for the students, you know, I just want to say thank you to everybody who submitted testimony and who came forward on this. I will note, I don't know if this is public yet. Two years ago, the legislature changed the law to create license plates that support Department of Land Natural Resources and their conservation efforts. One of those, I believe, is supposed to have honey creeper. FYI.
Not out yet.
Not out yet.
Okay, all right.
Okay, moving on, let's go to S C R one four eight and S R one four four requesting the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts to establish a Museum of Modern Hawaii History Task Force. Testifying first on this is the State Foundation on Culture and the Arts. Thank you for your patience.
That's interesting. Hi Chair, members of committee, State Foundation stands on their written testimony in support and here to answer questions.
Thank you. Next is Department of Accounting and General Services in support and Judiciary. Good afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you, in support, okay. I believe that is, oh, and Hawaii Tourism Authority in the S R, they have comments. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify this afternoon? Good afternoon, again.
Aloha, again Chair, Vice Chair and the Committee, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of cares and strong support. Yes, we are in support of the modern Hawaiian Art Museum or a task force to create such a thing. And it looks like the collaboration is of the Bishop Museum, Iolani Palace, the King Kamea, the Fifth Judiciary History Center and the State Archives. And this will be something very necessary to legislate because it will help support our culture and the arts. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? If not, are there any questions? All right, if not, thank you. It's the end of our agenda. I will note, we do have one more agenda coming up.
In five minutes.
Just a couple of minutes here, right? So why don't we recess for decision making, recess.
Ten minutes, because.
Good afternoon, we're reconvening the Committee on Transportation, Culture and the Arts for decision making on our three P M agenda here in State Capitol Conference Room two two four. I'll just note, we had already voted on the governor's messages. Or deferred them to a future date. So we'll begin with S C R one seven five and S R one one nine. Encouraging the state to build a partnership with Netherlands and collaborate on similar shared challenges and goals. Recommendation is to move this forward, making just a couple amendments. Just noting that both Hawaii and the Netherlands have committed to the same sustainable development goals and are both members of the local twenty thirty islands network. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair.
Okay, Chair's recommendation on S C R one seven, one seven five and S R one nineteen is to pass with amendments. Chair Li.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Elafanti.
Aye.
Senator Kiho Kaloli.
Aye.
And Senator Awa.
No.
Thank you, measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to the next measure, S C R seventy-two requesting establishment of a Hawaii Taiwan Friendship Task Force. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion? If not.
Chair's recommendation on S C R seventy-two is to pass unamended with five members present. Is anyone voting with reservations? Any no votes?
No.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. S C R one seven six and S R one twenty. Encouraging the state to collaborate with sister states on global environmental leadership. Recommendation is to pass but making amendments, with amendments. And we'll just similarly note that Hawaii has been committed to achieving sustainable development goals. Are members of the local twenty thirty islands network. And previously had passed Senate Concurrent Resolution sixty-nine session laws of Hawaii twenty fourteen endorsing and supporting the aloha plus challenge. Any discussion there? If not, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation to pass S C R one seven six and S R one twenty with amendments. With five members present, any voting with reservations? Any no votes?
No vote.
Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to S C R one seven eight and S R one two two. This is the Asia-Pacific Economic Cooperation Delegation. We'd like to defer this to Thursday, the thirtieth. We'll work with some of the stakeholders here to try and iron out a few kinks. So it'll be end of agenda, three oh one P M agenda on Thursday, the thirtieth.
Okay. This is one seven eight, but it's one four eight then. Where are we? Okay, so this one differ yet?
Yeah. So up next is S C R one one four and S R one oh seven recognizing August eighth, twenty twenty-three as Hawaiian honey creeper celebration day. Recommendation to pass as is. Any discussion? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Chair's recommendation on S C R one fourteen and S R one oh seven is to pass unamended. With five members present, any voting with reservations? Any no votes? Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Finally, moving on to the last set of measures, S C R one four eight and S R one four four. Requesting State Foundation to take a look at a Museum of Modern Hawaii History Task Force. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any discussion, Vice Chair?
Chair's recommendation on S C R one four eight and S R one four four to pass. What's that, unamended?
Unamended.
Unamended. Okay, with five members present, is there anyone voting with reservations? Any no votes? Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. All right, everybody, that's the end of our three P M agenda. Good afternoon, we're convening the Joint Committees on Transportation and Culture and the Arts and Government Operations on our joint three forty-five P M agenda. We have a couple resos up. First is S C R ninety-eight, S R ninety-one urging Department of Transportation, DAGs to collaborate on various transportation improvements at public facilities. Including parking stalls, E V parking stalls, secure bike storage lockers. And parking stalls sharing between employees. Testifying first is DAGs. Comments, Hawaii State Energy Office?
Are you unsure of Hawaii State Energy Office, if you stand on a roof, you have to comment or you have to discuss?
Thank you, Hawaii Bicycle League in support and one individual in opposition. That is all the written testimony we have. Please come forward.
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs and the Committees, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of cares. In strong support and we're just going to provide comments on the E Vs. In the E Vs onboard batteries store energy to power one or more electric motors. These batteries are charged using electricity from the grid and energy recaptured during braking, known as regenerative braking. Vehicles that run only on electricity procedure no tailpipe emissions, but there are upstream emissions associated with the production of electricity. Power E Vs with electricity is currently cost effective compared to using gasoline. But E Vs typically cost more to purchase. However, initial vehicle costs can be offset by energy cost savings, a federal tax credit and tax incentives. Electricity for charging vehicles is especially cost effective if drivers can take advantage of off-peak residential rates and other incentives offered by many utilities. The cost is okay, not going to go with that, but yeah, so for these reasons, because it is environmentally friendly and cost effective. It can be reasonably concluded that we should be supportive of E Vs. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure this afternoon? If not, other questions?
Yes, I do. There's no, there's only one other person.
Is the Energy Office pick on them?
Why don't you come on up? You're the only one that came from the government. So my question is, to me, this is very Oahu centered. Okay, I hate to say it, it is because we don't have we don't have as many electric vehicles on the Big Island because there are not as many charging opportunities. And for the Big Island, especially my side of the island, we don't have that many bicycle usage because it rains a lot, it's just too dangerous. So how do we provide equity to the neighbor islands who don't have the kind of facilities who are going to where state monies are going to be used proportionately higher on Oahu for this kind of resolution? I mean, how do we have an equal amount of monies for the neighbor islands who don't use these kinds of services?
Thank you for the question. One of the things I would say is that the biggest, one of the biggest barriers to the adoption of these types of technologies is access to the charging, as you noted. And so looking at state facilities and providing E V, looking for where you can provide E V charging for workplace is the equity in being able to get to the other counties. The same goes with bike stalls. Most of the things that discourage people from adopting these types of technologies are the things like being able to safely store your bike or, you know, can you charge your vehicle? So I would see this resolution as a starting point for assessing where those things should go.
Okay, so like I said, on my island, my side of the island, we don't use bicycles as much because it rains a lot. And so it's pretty dangerous to go on a road, especially when it's major highways to get from my side of, from Puna over to Hilo. It's just super dangerous. So you rarely see bicycles because it rains a lot.
Yes.
So why is it that my state monies are going to go for bicycle storage on Oahu when we don't use that much? Is there? I'm thinking about social equity. Shouldn't we allow, like on my side of the island, we have biodiesel as a prevailing alternative source rather than E V? And we're also pushing for hydrogen because geothermal you know, could alternatively be used for hydrogen. Shouldn't we allow for those kinds of alternatives being given to provide the kind of equity? Equitable expense sharing for my side of the island?
I think if, as a state, we should look at all forms of decarbonization. It's not going to be a silver bullet. I think that the resolution provides some solutions, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't look at the other alternatives that.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't mind that if we amend this to provide for other solutions for other rural areas in the state of Hawaii? So that will allow for the kind of equitable sharing in expenses that do not use bicycles, that do not use electric vehicles.
Would promote the decarbonization of ground transportation consistent? That you're asking the energy.
Yeah, so I would like buses for instance, I would like more buses. So we would like, I would like to have the same amount of money that's going to be used for Oahu to be used for buses for my island. Because that goes for decarbonization, that promotes.
I guess I would this deals, this directs DAGs and D O T, so I would have to look to see to what extent that they actually have control over the bus routes. Because that's normally a county thing.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? If not, are we turn it over to G V O?
All right, we're going to turn it on to us, S C R one eighteen, the only reso that we're the lead on, which is relating to looking at L R B to research Makahiki tradition to determine the appropriate date to designate as a state holiday celebrating Makahiki. We have written testimony from Legislative Reference Bureau, are they here? No, no, they're not. They have comments in that there is a commemorative day already established and we should look at that for the state holiday. We have Julia Estigoy Kahone. She has written testimony in support of the measure. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to testify on this or Zoom land? Seeing none, I guess we can't really ask anybody questions, so I guess we will research, ah, research. Recession for decision making.
Good afternoon, we're reconvening the Committees on Transportation, Culture and the Arts and Government Operations for decision making on our three forty-five P M joint agenda. First is S C R ninety-eight, S R ninety-one. Recommendation based on some of the testimony, we'd like to move this forward with amendments. Firstly, making amendments that would also have the departments look at options that best fit neighbor island transportation for public employees. Secondly, we'd like to add the Energy Office into the mix along with D O T and DAGs. And then just note that we'd like them to take a look at how we're going to be able to put an E V charging infrastructure that exceeds expected demand. Any discussion? All right, if not, Vice Chair.
For the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, Chair's recommendation is to pass S C R ninety-eight and S R ninety-one. Chair Li.
Aye.
Vice Chair goes aye, Senator Elafanti.
Aye.
Senator Kiho Kaloli.
Aye.
Senator Awa. Measure is adopted for the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts.
Okay, Government Operations Committee, same recommendation, S C R is a Senate draft one, I vote yes.
Vice Chair votes, or G V O Vice Chair votes yes, Senator Sam Wintura?
Aye.
Senator Wakai?
Yes.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Measure passes, G V O.
Okay, thank you very much, members. Next reso was S C R one eighteen. What we're going to do is, based on the testimony of the Legislative Reference Bureau, we're going to go ahead and we're going to select the day of commemoration in Act sixty-eight of twenty oh eight as Makahiki Day and make it a non-paid state holiday. Members, questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair, S C R one eighteen, Senate draft one.
Okay, let's take a ask with the members, Chair McKelvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Sam Wintura?
Aye.
Senator Wakai?
Yes.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Measure passes, G V O.
Thank you, T C A Committee, same recommendation.
Okay, for the Committee on Transportation and Culture and the Arts, Chair's recommendation on S C R one eighteen to pass with amendments with five members present. Any voting with reservations? Any no votes? Measure is adopted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, everybody, we are adjourned.